Buenos dias, Senadores. The Committee on Health and Veterans Affairs is now in session. The time is 2:01 in the afternoon. It is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. Before we begin, a full disclosure. Hagatnia from Bank of Guam to Adalup has been out of water. I was on the verge of postponing this public hearing, but decided to continue on with it. Because of this, I want to be prudent in managing our time wisely in the event that water is not restored. I want to avoid creating any unsanitary environment for all of you here today and for our employees and central staff of the Guam Legislature. So, we will proceed. Again, thank you for being with us today, whether you're seated here in the Guam Congress Building or joining us from home via livestream. This afternoon, we're here to listen to testimony on several important bills. Audio? If we could please turn up the microphone. Thank you so much. We're here to listen to testimony on several important bills and we're grateful for your interest and involvement in the legislative process. Bill 100, introduced by Senator Sabina Perez. Bill 100 seeks to strengthen early childhood development across Guam by improving the island's early care and education system. This legislation updates and adds provisions to various sections of Guam law to support a more coordinated, accessible, and effective network of services for children from birth to age five. It promotes data sharing, cross-agency collaboration, community outreach, and workforce development to ensure all children receive the support they need to succeed early in life. We are also here to receive testimony on Bill 123, introduced by Senator Therese Terlahi. Bill 123 updates the legal scope of practice for physicians' assistance, including their authority to prescribe medications. In addition to placing PAs on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and authorizing the Code of Ethics, this bill modernizes Guam law to reflect the evolving role of PAs in healthcare delivery, ensuring they can practice and prescribe safely, legally, and effectively. And just a quick note before we begin. Official notice for today's hearing was sent to all senators, key stakeholders, and the media on June 11th and then again on June 16th of 2025, as required by Guam's open government law. We also posted it on the Guam's Legislature website and the public notice portal so the public could stay informed. All the materials for today's hearing are available on the Committee shared drive, and if you prefer a printed copy, just let us know. We've got those on hand, too. A full video of this hearing will be posted on the Guam Legislature media YouTube channel for anyone who wants to watch it later, and it's also streaming as we speak. Now, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and welcome members of the Guam Legislature that are with us today, starting to my left, Senator Therese Terlahi, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Telo Taiagui. Thank you so much for being here. And again, thank you to our stakeholders and every member of the public that are with us today. Your time and your voice truly matter. By showing up, you help shape the policies that affect all of us, so thank you for being a part of this process. Before we move forward, just a quick reminder. Each senator will have five minutes to ask questions or make comments, and the author of each bill will have 10 minutes to speak and walk us through the bill that they are proposing. This will help keep things moving and make sure everyone gets a fair chance to speak. Now, if you are here to testify on Bill 100, we invite you to come up and have a seat at the table. And when it is your turn to speak, please speak directly into the microphone, state your full name and title, and let us know if you are representing any particular organization or speaking on behalf of yourself or a government agency. We'll start now with the bill's author, Senator Sabina Perez, for an introduction and summary of her legislation. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you so much, Senators Matanani, for this opportunity to hear this bill. Bill 138 is a call to action to address the literacy crisis that exists, not only in the U.S., but right here on Guam. Nationwide, one in six adults, about 36 million people, have low literacy skills, and we know that socially disadvantaged parents are more likely to pass on these weaker skills to their children. Low literacy can limit access to healthcare, housing, employment, voting, and can even increase the risk of incarceration. This bill recognizes that literacy begins long before a child steps into a classroom. Brain development starts in infancy, and by the age of two, much of the basic brain architecture for language is already in place. Parents play a critical role. MRI studies show that speaking and reading to children activate the Broca's area, the part of the brain responsible for language development. Just by reading a picture book a day, parents can expose their child to over a million words before they even reach kindergarten. We also know that gaps between children from low literacy and high literacy households can be seen as early as nine months, and by third grade, children who aren't proficient readers are four times more likely to drop out of school. So it is clear, early intervention matters. Bill 100 proposes creating government-wide network of trained professionals, people in agencies like Department of Public Health and Social Services, Guam Memorial Hospital, Guam Behavioral Health and Mona Center, Guam Department of Education, GCC, UOG, and Judiciary, who already interact with families from birth to eight. And these professionals would be trained to identify developmental milestones and support parents through education, resources, screening, or referrals. These early years are critical, and our system must be prepared to meet families where they are. The bill requires professionals licensed in the healing arts to complete regular training in early child development. This includes doctors, therapists, social workers, and others who are often trusted guides for families. This training ensures that they can recognize early signs and offer timely support. We must also align this effort with existing regulations for childcare facilities to ensure holistic, age-appropriate educational opportunities. At the heart of 100, Bill 10838 is a simple truth: It takes a village to raise a child. And by building awareness and capacity across our agencies, we are working to ensure that every child in Guam has a strong start and a fair chance to succeed. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Perez. We now open the floor for public testimony, and we'll begin to my left with Dr. Laura Souter.
Donkunas Sisus Massey. Importante esti na diniscubri zaninina sa manis sitani famagoonta. Good morning or good afternoon. I am Laura M. Torres Souter, and I'm here to testify, together with my husband, who's not present but is in spirit, Dr. Samuel Betances, to testify in support, full support, of Bill Number 138, 100-38, introduced by Senator Sabina Perez, to amend the code to require early childhood education training for all public service employees and those who require licenses from the government with responsibilities for providing direct services to pregnant women, parents, and guardians of children from birth to eight years of age. Early childhood literacy is crucial and critical to school readiness and the subsequent academic success of all of our island children. The findings contained in the introduction to this proposed legislation summarize the reality which prevails in Guam. About 70% of our children start school already behind due to a lack of language skills development that puts them on a track of failure even before they enter kindergarten. We give much lip service as a community to the need to address the academic performance of Guam's public school student population. Putting our resources into early development is a huge investment that promises valuable outcomes. What this bill proposes is a significant step in building consciousness among all stakeholders, family caretakers, as well as early childhood education providers, and other professionals serving families from birth to eight. Language and literacy development is key to academic success. Not everyone knows that. Not everyone knows how important it is to intervene early so that we don't have problems later. Research has shown that the academic achievement gap is predictable by age three. Folks, we can tell whether a child is going to succeed in school or not by the age of three by the language development that they have experienced from birth to three. Not third grade, which is usually what people think. When children learn to read by the third grade, you measure academic likelihood of failure or success. It starts much earlier, at age three, before a child actually enters school. If this is the case, we have the opportunity to reverse the learning lag of preschool children significantly through awareness and training programs that target rich language development when a child is born and throughout their academic trajectory. Just like a leak in a kitchen sink, if we fix it when it starts, it won't cause so much long-term damage as it would if left unattended. The remedies contained in Bill 138 won't solve or eliminate the crisis, but it will go a long way toward institutionalizing and prioritizing early childhood development needs and consciousness in our community. As advocates of literacy development in any language, especially in Chamorro and English as it relates to Guam's official languages, Dr. Betances and I are fully supportive of this measure and are committed to doing what we can to contribute to this effort if called upon to add value. Our babies and preschoolers deserve nothing less than such an investment as this. Donkunas Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Dr. Souter. Mrs. Flores?
Buenos tardes, Senators Salas Matanani and honorable committee members. The Bureau of Women's Affairs lauds the intent of this bill authored by Senator Sabina Perez. However, we respectfully suggest that rather than spending government funds to train people who provide government services to this clientele on the importance of teaching children to read, instead, funding should focus on improving, supplementing, and expanding the resources that already exist in our community toward this effort. For example, Guam Community College has a longstanding, excellent Early Childhood Education Associate Degree Program, and the University of Guam now offers an Early Childhood Education specialization within its Elementary Education Bachelor's Degree Program. Work with GCC and UOG and our mayor's offices to have upper-level students in the programs, perhaps as a part of community service component. Offer Saturday morning or weekday afternoon Introduction to Reading classes at village and community centers around the island. These programs could, with funding through this bill, have adults read aloud to children who attend and provide them with several paperback books to take home. Perhaps even one of the books could be one of the Chamorro books now being produced by various local children's authors, which would add a cultural component to the program. Another resource to enhance would be the Public Health Project Visita y Familia. This innovative home visiting program was recently awarded accreditation by Prevent Child Abuse America as "a provider of high-quality home visiting services to families that want to improve their child's health, nutrition, and developmental outcomes," according to a DPHSS release. Guam is the first of the U.S. territories to receive this accreditation, and kudos to Director Therese Areola and the folks at Public Health that are responsible for this designation. Project Visita y Familia assists families, starting with prenatal care and extends that care up to five years after the child is born. It helps nurture child development, including long-term improvements in children's school performance. The program also attempts to prevent adverse childhood experiences, such as child abuse and neglect. Administered under the Bureau of Family Health and Nursing Services, this program assists more than 260 children and parents in Mainilau, Dedodo, and Gigo. Bill 138 could be modified to fund an expansion of this program by adding a reading component, whereby someone visits the home on a regular basis to teach parents to read to their children and provide free paperback books to families. We used to have a federally funded Parent Information Resource Center run by Pauline Camacho. Locally fund that program. As I recall, Pauline did a great job trying to get resources into the hands of parents who needed but could not afford them. I've had public school kindergarten teachers tell me that they have students who come to kindergarten having never seen a book. This bill could actively reverse that trend. Rather than training administrators of programs or government employees, use this legislation to put books in the hands of children. A book is still magic to a child, even though our little ones seem ambulantly attached to the Disney Plus or YouTube Kids apps on our phones or their own iPads. When I visited Chuk about two decades ago with Senator Carlotta Leon Guerrero to write about a medical mission, I asked her what I could bring. Instantly, she said children's books. I vividly remember sitting under a coconut tree and children flocking around me to look at the pictures and listen as I read stories from the books I brought for them. They probably didn't understand half of what I was saying, but just looking at the pictures was enchanting for them. Books provide parents with the ability to interact with their children, to bond with them. They fuel a young child's imagination in the most positive and productive ways. So rather than train government employees, please adapt this legislation to provide reading opportunities and books for our young children. This small action will pay back in huge literary dividends for our babies and probably help raise our children's reading test scores as well. Sisus Massey for the opportunity to provide this testimony regarding suggestions we think will make Bill 138 a stronger piece of legislation focused on improving the reading abilities of Guam's young children.
Thank you, Mrs. Flores. I'd like to acknowledge the presence and participation of the Committee on Health, Vice Chair Senator and Vice Speaker Tony Ada, as well as the presence of a committee member, Senator Sean G. Matata. Thank you, gentlemen. Dr. Shea, are you here to testify on Bill 100?
Yes. Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Thomas Shea. I've been on Guam for nearly 29 years, and I have two grandkids, so I can attest to this bill here. I don't know much about the GOV-Guam system as far as early intervention goes, but I think the intent of the bill is actually good. If anything, it raises the awareness, so I commend Senator Sabina Perez on this bill. There's some questions that I have regarding this bill, and one of them, I know they apply to mainly public health and healing arts, Guam Department of Education, UOG, GCC, and even the judiciary. The training, this bill is mainly to ensure that those people who are in contact with pregnant moms, with kids, get the early child development, the training to make them aware so they can make the referrals, correct? Not necessarily treatment, just to raise the awareness so that they can, hey, the referrals, and those that actually does the treatments also get the same training. I assume they already got those training if they're in that intervention group.
So, okay, yeah. So one of the things that I contemplated, so that's why the verbiage is open to change. So really, we want to be able to create a network of competent professionals, especially based on the evidence and the science and research. We definitely want to use the best practices. And so, yeah, the goal is really those who interface with parents of that age have what it takes to, they can make that assessment, whether a referral to education, more educational services, it could be just referral. If you're a doctor, maybe you have screening services available to understand that, you know, a lot of our healthcare professionals have time constraints, and so possibly a physician called a patient navigator can be the one to do the screening. So it really depends, you know, I'm open to, that's why we have this public hearing, is getting the feedback to tailor this bill to make it better.
Okay, yeah, thank you. In fact, I have to apologize. I know the senator contacted me a couple of times to discuss the bill, but I just wasn't available. But one of the things I think is important is to, for the provider's standpoint, is knowing the different milestones of developmental stages. And many of the physicians actually gone through, if they've gone through medical school, they actually received the training to recognize the different milestones, what you should, when you should be walking, when you should be talking. And one of the biggest issues is speech delay on Guam that I noticed with the kids that I've delivered, is that we noticed that speech delay is one of the biggest issues, often more to boys than to girls. So when we discovered that, we usually try to contact the pediatricians, and we say, hey, you know, maybe you should have the pediatricians evaluate them. I did send the bill to community pediatricians, though they haven't gotten back to me. So I would suggest then maybe getting together with your office and discussing the bill with you in more detail. But one of the challenges that we find is that Guam is so limited in speech therapy for children, because we can make the referrals, but if they can't get them in, then it's no use to identify them as well. Also, I think speech therapy, even in Hawaii, I think is limited up to age three. Once up to age three, I think it drops off. If I'm wrong on that, someone can correct me. But if, so that's something that probably has to change, because not everybody can afford a private speech therapist or a clinical psychologist for that matter. So that may be something that can be added to the bill, that can be supplementing the speech therapy side for children. Autism is also another one that can be kind of mixed into this category as well. Now, as far as the healing arts go, the healing arts specifically identifies chiropractic, occupational therapy, physical therapy, respiratory therapy. It doesn't really include physicians on there. So I assume the healing arts for this bill, the training is only specifically applied to those specific groups that's identified on this specific bill. Right? That's on page six, line one through six. And the training is, you know, it really puts the onus on Department of Public Health and Social Services. So I hope they're here to kind of, you know, talk about that, too. But I assume that it's going to be specifically identified to these bill, in the bill for this particular section. Chiropractic, occupational therapy, physical therapists, respiratory therapy, dietitian, social work shall attain the early intervention training, developmental training. So that section probably should be clarified. If it's going to include the physicians, then I think more of the physicians will come in and probably provide their opinions on it. But those who have attended medical school, we actually have these early developmental trainings in childhood already, so it may be kind of redundant. Other than that, you know, I think overall, the bill is good, but there's a lot of challenges. Majority of, it actually applies to the government of Guam. It's not really to the private sector. So these are going to be challenges that you're going to have to address. I don't know how to address them, because I know I'm in the private sector. So we do our own trainings as far as these early intervention goes, and that's pretty much it, that I have to suggest that go over the bill.
Thank you, Dr. Shea, for your suggestions and comments, and Senator Perez, I guess we'll work through that in the markup hearing. Okay. Ma'am?
Good afternoon. Heidi Kenata, Chief Children's Services Administrator with the Division of Children's Wellness under the Department of Public Health and Social Services. I'm here today to read onto the record the written testimony on behalf of Director Teresa Hoffiday Chairwoman Sabrina Salas-Mantanani and Senators of the 38 Guam Legislature, thank you for the opportunity to discuss how Bill Number 100-38COR will benefit families in Guam as well as the agencies that support them. This legislation aims to ensure that every professional interaction involving families with children from birth to eight years old, whether they are applying for Medicaid or the medically indigent program, MIP, attending WIC clinics, receiving home visits, participating in Head Start classrooms, or navigating school and court referrals, will be guided by consistent research-based practices in communication, reading, play, and developmental screening. Families will no longer have to manage conflicting messages or repeat their child's history. They can rely on each provider to offer cohesive support and anticipate their child's needs. For parents, these unified practices foster stronger connections and more manageable daily routines. Simple strategies, such as incorporating questions into everyday chores or counting steps on the way to the bus stop, become familiar tools that parents can utilize in various settings. If a toddler shows signs of speech delays, the mother can expect the same encouraging phrases and activities from her home visitor, preschool teacher, and pediatric social worker. This continuity helps prevent minor delays from escalating, alleviates parental anxiety, and builds momentum toward healthy development. Children will thrive in more nurturing and predictable environments. When all adults use shared techniques for praising effort, redirecting frustration, and supporting skill development, children feel recognized and motivated. Over time, we will see tangible improvements in vocabulary, self-regulation, and school readiness, along with a decrease in the number of children needing intensive academic remediation or behavioral support. As these young learners enter kindergarten, they will not only have stronger academic foundations, but also the confidence and coping skills essential for their success. Health, education, and social service agencies will also benefit from significant efficiencies. A unified training curriculum will eliminate redundant orientation and professional development efforts. WIC counselors, home visitors, teachers, social workers, and judges will all utilize the same trainer network and registry, simplifying scheduling and record-keeping. When staff possess common competencies and credentials, referrals will be expedited, paperwork will be minimized, and interdepartmental collaboration will be streamlined. This coordinated system will also yield long-term savings by addressing developmental and behavioral needs early through standardized screenings and consistent family engagement strategies. We can reduce the number of children who later require specialized academic services or intensive support. The initial investment in training will pay off through lower caseloads and healthier, more resilient children and families who can focus on learning, working, and contributing to our community. To operationalize this framework, we will lead a collaborative effort with all relevant agencies, including DPHSS programs, WIC, Home Visiting Services, Guam Early Intervention System/Carino, Head Start, DOE, the judiciary, and higher education partners to design and implement the training rollout. Key steps will include establishing a core team of local trainers and providing them with trained trainer support, phasing the rollout across agencies to align with staffing capacity and minimize service disruption, creating a centralized registry to track completion of required modules, communicating clearly and consistently with all staff through briefings, calendars, and progress reports to ensure everyone understands timeliness, responsibilities, and benefits, evaluating outcomes by monitoring key indicators such as developmental screening rates, parent-reported confidence, and inter-agency referral efficiency. Bill Number 100-38COR is not just a training mandate. It embodies our commitment to delivering seamless, high-quality support for every Guam family from pregnancy through their child's eighth birthday. By integrating various programs such as WIC, Home Visiting, GIEC, Carino, Head Start, DOE, and judicial touchpoints into a cohesive system and empowering DPHSS to coordinate implementation, will uplift parents, empower children, and enhance every agency's ability to serve effectively and efficiently. We are in support of this bill and are ready to assist with its planning and execution. Thank you for your consideration. Teresa C. Areola, Director, Department of Public Health and Social Services.
Thank you, Mrs. Kenata. We will now open the floor to questions from my colleagues, beginning with the bill's author, Senator Perez.
Donkunas Sisus Massey, Department of Public Health, and everyone here that came to testify in support of the bill. This is really very generous, and I do appreciate Department of Public Health's willingness to lead this effort. And I am open to, is there anything that we need to adjust in the bill? I'm open to any kind of language changes, but it looks like you're willing to move on this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'm very grateful. Thank you so much. And to Dr. Shea's point, yes, my intention was to have the doctors included as well, so we'll definitely change the language to include doctors.
You don't need to. That's what I'm saying. I'm just pointing it out that I like what you put on there. I mean, the doctors, actually, for us, in order for us to pass medical school boards, we have child development that's already on our boards. So you may, you know, you may add more work to the physician who don't have that training, but something that... But something that I think some of the physicians will probably say, well, that's unnecessary. You know, there's a lot more things to do for them other than to get additional training in early childhood. But if they have the time, sure, I think they should. But I'm not suggesting that you add the physician part into it.
Yeah, because there's a, this field is growing. It's an ever-growing field, and so there's evidence, there's new evidence and new practices that can be implemented. So the idea is to make sure that professionals are up to date on the latest practices.
Yeah. And I think the bill allows the public health to create the rules, right? They're the one that actually, well, I guess you may have to include the Guam Board of Medical Examiners onto this bill if you're going to add the physicians on it because they would have to add to the rules for licensing as well because they may have to oversee this if it's public law. So if they don't get this training, then technically, maybe they shouldn't be licensed, in other words. But I think they're going to be a little hard to swallow for many of the physicians, I think, if they're not aware.
Okay. And as far as continuing education credits?
Yes.
How often and how much do you need to achieve?
Sure. For example, if to remain board certified, Dr. Yasebi and myself, we probably need to get critic hours. And for us, we get category, you know, divided by categories. Category one is probably the highest one you can get in continuing medical education. We require 25 hours per year, so 50 per two years, per licensing cycle. But in addition to that, we read medical journals, so you can get Level Two, Level Three as well. But to remain board certified, and I spoke to Dr. Berg, who's the Chair of the Board, is that if you maintain your board certification, that should be good because the law does not, and I'll speak on that later on in your other bill, Senator Tzolai's bill. Board certification is not required here on Guam. So I think there's something to be discussed. But when we get board certified, we automatically get our credits. We automatically get our CME credits. So if you want to interject that into the bill that, hey, if you're board certified, perhaps you don't have to do this additional training. That may be a suggestion.
Yeah. So what would be the the best way you would recommend for updated training regarding early childhood development?
Well, if you look at the drug enforcement agencies, for example, when there was the opiate crisis, they actually require physicians before they get their DEA license, they require so many hours that you have to go online and go over these training sessions. It was pretty tedious. You took, because, I don't know, it's supposed to be like 20 hours, I think, or something like that or more. But we could finish it in about six hours if you sit there and just go through it. So it's something that has to be set up in a way that's not punitive and that physician in their busy schedule can get through. And that's something that has to be identified because with the DEA, it has to be a program that was authorized by the American Medical Association and certain association that has to be qualified to say, okay, if you go through this training this way, then you're qualified. I don't know how to address that as far as the early, maybe the pediatricians can add on to it. I'm not too sure because, you know, they see kids all the time. And that's probably the target group that you want to address.
Okay.
Now, OBs, too, because you got to understand, though, when we deliver the baby, we don't, we can't talk to the baby at birth. Once the baby is born, we hand that off to the pediatricians. So they take over that care. So we only deal with the mom's aspect of it. But we do see kids when they come for their postpartum visits, you know, all the way, and we have kids all the time in our clinic. But we do identify them that, hey, you know, how come, you know, this kid is not talking yet? Perhaps we need to see a clinical psychologist. And we do identify. And we do refer, but the difficulty, again, is when you refer, it's difficult because public health is always busy. Yeah. So that's a challenge there.
Yeah. I mean, the fact that we don't have too many pediatricians, like specialties here, it often falls upon the family doctors, right, to?
Well, no, we have a lot of pediatricians on Guam. We we do. We do have, I don't think we have a shortage of pediatricians, but the family practice also see kids, too. The challenge is that pediatrician can't handle these interventions. They're not trained to do that. They usually refer them to a pediatric clinical psychologist. And I try to, my daughter's a pediatric clinical psychologist, but she works out of Hawaii, and she trains in Johns Hopkins. But there's special trainings that have to do that, and Guam is kind of short in that. And speech delay is actually very specific to to kids, and they need to get that early. If you catch that late, then, you know, they have a difficult time speaking. Now, I learned English when I was fourth grade, so you got to excuse me for my English a little bit, but I get by. I get by.
Okay. Thanks. We'll definitely talk to you more regarding any specific changes.
Yeah.
Dr. Sauter, I know you were raising your hand. You had something you wanted to say.
I think, from what I understand, and we've worked with you before, we've had many discussions with other early childhood care providers. At the core of this is language literacy, language capacity, right? I have full respect for what doctors do, what medical practitioners do in relation to interventions and evaluation of a child's development over a spectrum of developmental criteria. But what we're talking about is language skills, okay? And we're talking about the fact that most of our families do not have a literacy tradition. They don't read to their kids when they're little. They believe, most island cultures believe, that until a child actually speaks, you don't have to speak to them a lot. And what we're talking about is a robust interaction between parents, caregivers, family members, and a child from the time of birth and even pre-birth, speaking to that child so that that child hears words. Because most of the language that a child acquires is, the the brain absorbs all and conducts these statistics. So by the time a child reaches seven months of age, a child is already culture-bound in their language. And prior to that, they have the capacity to speak any language in the world. The brain, as it receive, at the highest point of the brain's capacity to receive signals about language is between birth and seven months old. So the more the language, the child is immersed in language, in being spoken to, in being, you know, oh, there's a plane. The plane is where? You know, it flies in the sky. Well, what is the color of the sky? And stretching and stretching and stretching. That kind of language environment leads to academic success. We know that because there have been many, many brain studies. There have been many studies related to literacy development and the lack thereof. So we're talking about that kind of language richness. My understanding of the bill was to facilitate consciousness building in the community relative to having mothers and fathers and caregivers understand they can play a critical role in that language development. They don't even have to be literate. They don't have to be graduates, high school graduates or college graduates. They don't, if they don't have a lot of books at home, they can still speak to their child, constantly speak to their child. And literacy develops in any language. So if I don't speak English well, but I speak Samuru, or I speak Chukis, or whatever the language I speak, I can I can develop a language-rich environment for that child of mine or the child that I'm in contact with. So at the base level, that's what we're talking about, is helping practitioners develop the consciousness in all that they, in all whom they relate with, right, to speak to the child. Even before the child can say a word, the child is developing language literacy. And we know now that children who are born in language-impoverished environments are significantly disadvantaged to the point that children who are born into language-rich environments hear words spoken 30 million times more than children who are born into language-impoverished environments. And that spells, you know, trouble in magnitude and all form by the time they reach kindergarten. So at the core, I hope that the bill addresses that need, which is that every practitioner, public or private, who interfaces with potential parents, parents, you know, and I think there should be a high school curriculum as well because all those high school students are going to be parents quickly if they're not already, no? So we need to get to develop an understanding about how critical their role is, even before they meet any professional that provides an intervention. They have the power to change the trajectory of their children if they understand. And and my contention is that they just don't know that they're brain developers, even early childhood practitioners. When when we, I did training with GCC, we trained all of the early childhood development centers. And they were not aware, they they thought they were glorified babysitters. Their role was to make sure that the kids were safe, that they ate, that they didn't hurt each other, and, you know, and teach them a little bit of a curriculum. But they were not conscious that they were brain developers, and that's what we're talking about. The child's brain develops astronomically from birth to three. And if we don't, if we don't have the kind of understanding of the power that lays in that age group with parents and older siblings and nonas and tatas and everybody around them, if we don't have a consciousness, then we can't act on their behalf. So I just wanted to make clear that at the base level, we're talking about language, you know, and and in enriching the language environments of all of our kids, whomever they're born to, because everybody can speak some language. And that's, that's what we're talking about, I hope.
Yeah. Susie Mossi, Dr. Sauter, that's exactly what this bill is about. And thank you for bringing, reinforcing that idea that it's about. So oral language is the is a foundation for written and literacy. And so what they found is that conversational turns helps to build brains. And so we know that babies can't read, but by building that oral foundation, we're building that that ability to to get to that level. And so one of the, so this is why training is so important because they stay within five seconds of a prompt. So a child coos, if a child points, then try to respond within five seconds. That, and those are called conversational turns. And that really facilitates the development of a child's brain and language processing. And so when we're talking about speech delays, perhaps it's a matter of getting to the parents to show and explain that, you know, by doing this, you know, we're raising, we're helping to promote this development so that when, by the time they enter school, they're not behind, right? So that's really the crux of this bill is to sound the alarm and the, to really reinforce the importance of parents in this, in this, and also those that interface with them that, you know, they have a role, too, to play in ensuring that they understand how important their role is on the front lines is. One of the surveys that was taken stated that 94% of mothers surveyed said that no health professional ever spoke to them about language development. And so we're missing this really critical opportunity for for our children and our society overall. So I really, really appreciate Department of Public Health and your support. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. I had a question for Public Health. Mrs. Kanata, you mentioned that you are the chief division of child welfare. Can you tell me about the Guam Early Learning Council?
Sure. So the Guam Early Learning Council is, by title, falls under, is overseen by Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services and is an advisory arm of the Division of Children's Wellness.
Okay. And how often do they meet?
They are scheduled to meet quarterly. However, of course, there are some cases, and more recently in the past year, we have not had that opportunity to meet. But they are, they do have scheduled meetings quarterly.
Is it true that the last time they met was in March of last year?
That sounds about accurate, might be, yes.
And what would be, in your interpretation of this bill, the Guam Early Learning Council's involvement with the implementation if this bill were to become law?
So the Guam Early Learning Council is, consists of various organizations, government of Guam agencies, and cabinet members, so, and their representatives. So they will play a very integral part in ensuring that this bill is carried out effectively. And a lot of, so the Guam Early Learning Council also consists of various subcommittees. So depending on who is assigned to which subcommittee will determine the leads of ensuring the bill is carried out properly.
And so I guess really, if you could please take this message back then to to the director or the acting director, if this bill were to become law, we really need this Guam Early Learning Council to be more active and proactive because they're in this bill throughout this bill. So that's my only concern is the fact that they haven't met since March of last year. And you're saying if this bill is implemented, that they would have an integral role.
Yes, that's correct. And I also want to point out that there are various reasons why, to my understanding, why the Guam Early Learning Council has not met successfully as planned. A lot of that has to do with long-term, longtime representatives who have retired or have relocated. And a lot of these positions are appointed by either the governor or by the organization that they're representing. And so there's been a lot of change in representatives through the past year. But I I have been speaking with the current president of the council, who also has intentions of stepping down from that position. And so that is something that we're, we have been made aware of, and we're trying to work through at this time. But yes, I will carry the feedback back to our director.
Who is the president?
Ms. Elena Clavea at this time.
How many active members are on the council and how many members are supposed to be on the council?
I am, I want to say actively, there's about 11 members. I am not prepared with how many members are supposed to be on the council. But but I will gather that information and send it to you via email.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I will get with you to get more details about the Guam Early Learning Council because this is definitely a legislation that I would like to see, you know, come to fruition. So thank you so much, Mrs. Kanata. Senator Tydequie?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues and good afternoon to everyone who's here to testify today. Thank you for taking some time out of your schedule to talk about something that's very important. I think the author of the legislation has been an advocate for literacy in our community and and finding every avenue there is to, you know, promote that. This is one way, but I've always been one that's a stickler with regards to the cost to the government of Guam, how much this would cost, and whether it would be implemented or not in legislation. Earlier, I'm sorry, your first name from Public Health?
Heidi.
Heidi?
Yes.
Heidi, okay. Thank you. So Heidi, on, you know, I think there's a lot more than 11 that sits on the early development that the chairman brought up. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, there, there's still vacant positions from the Head Start side, the private care, foster care, Medicaid slash CHIP, and health insurance that are vacant. And currently, right now, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 people sitting on there. So it's quite large, a quite huge group that can do so much, you know? I mean, you've got people everywhere from the private sector, homeless children and youth representatives, to mental health agency representative, GEIS services provider, parent representation. And I believe Eclavea is part of the early child consultant with Guam Cedars as well. I mean, this is the group. You want to get together, you know, and and make something happen. However, you know, the the way the legislation is written, I have some concerns about it, the same as the judiciary of Guam, who has their testimony that we received here. They're unsure that, because basically, everybody at the judiciary branch, you know, touches the lives of an individual, a mother, a pregnant mother, a child, sometimes there, and then that would mean the whole judiciary would have to take these courses. And in the legislation, I know that it also, oh, and just for the record before I forget, page seven of the legislation, where it talks about the University of Guam, there is no AAA process that is established for the University of Guam to create the, or to identify positions and create a AAA process. However, GCC as well as DOE, I mean DOE, and of course, Public Health, all have this requirement as well as judiciary. So I think that just is. So I think that's just, it's just oversight on the bill. So they would need to incorporate the AAA so in the event markup. But moving forward, do you have the legislation in front of you, Heidi?
No, ma'am.
You don't, can we get her a copy, please? Copy of the bill? Makes it easier when we ask questions that we can refer to certain areas. Oh, Pauline has one. Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Okay, I'd like you to go to page six of the legislation. Okay. You have to give me a couple more seconds on that one, because you were timing it when they were giving her a, okay, a few more. Okay, so on page six, where it talks on section six, it says to identify positions within the authority. Now, the authority you say is Department of Public Health and Social Service, correct? That's the authority? Okay, this is GMH. It's under Title 10, okay. Okay, that's under GMH, thank you. Yeah, because I'm showing here Title 10 is under, you know, health and safety, and that is under GMH? Okay. So the authority is GMH, okay, thank you for that, Senator, I appreciate it. Then, of course, further down, it says the department shall identify its positions. What do you assume its positions mean? And that's further down on page six, line 17.
My interpretation, as it's written, the positions would be our physicians who are perhaps registered with our health professional licensing offices, also those who, within the Division of Children's Wellness, under the home visiting program, all base, basically all positions who interact with mothers. This may include even our public welfare programs for SNAP, Medicaid applicants, all public benefit programs. That's my interpretation of positions when, as it relates to this section.
Would you assume that something like this would be very helpful for daycare centers, since we're talking about at a, you know, very, very young age, before they go into school?
Yes, absolutely. And the Division of Children's Wellness, which is my division, we do also license childcare facilities in Guam. So yes, it would be beneficial.
And under this, would they, would every employee of a daycare center be required to take these program, take this educational class?
So childcare facilities are mandated to comply with what's called Guam's Plan for Professional Development. And within that includes several modules and course requirements, of which includes having literacy, health and safety, different types of orientation that would help provide a better understanding of first-time childcare employees to, and has milestones for employees to advance in their professional development.
Would these guidelines be useful when, you know, working with the other agencies?
With other agencies?
In other words, would you, would you be using these? Because it requires Public Health to come up with these guidelines and teaching mechanisms. Would you be using the same kind of criteria that you use for these daycare facilities?
Yes, absolutely. It could definitely be easily integrated, in my opinion, with what's already established through another public law, which is, which regulates childcare facilities and group childcare homes, so yes.
So it's basically more than halfway done, right? As far as the rules and reg, I mean, not rules and reg, but the guidelines, correct?
Potentially could be more than halfway done, yes.
Okay. So who, who will provide this training? And what particular certification will be needed when it's, to continue? You know, who will provide the training? What certification will be required? And lastly, will, will there be a requirement to, for continued learning? You know, like you have to come back to get refreshed every, you know, two years, one year?
Yeah, so when we're thinking about who's going to be required to conduct the training, that's a discussion that we would have to have. The Division of Children's Wellness does regulate childcare providers and those providers who are registered to as a childcare development fund provider. Early childhood literacy is definitely one of our target measures when we're, when we're training our childcare providers for the industry. Now collectively, it would be wise for us to meet, to identify, you know, and I did include that, I mentioned that in Director Ariola's testimony is, you know, establishing a core team of local trainers and identifying who will be responsible to enforce the training, provide the training. Additionally, identifying developmental screening rates, briefings, calendars. So I'm imagining Public Health would be, take the lead role in ensuring that these meetings take place and, as well as tracking the professional development. So we're already tracking the professional development advancements of childcare providers. However, we are prepared and are willing to track the professional development of all the other positions as stated in this bill.
Yeah, I think what we're trying to do is be able to reach certain, you know, the children, you know, from such a young age and those places like the daycare facilities, even before they even enter into school, to try and, you know, get a good grasp on where you can be, find some kind of outreach for these parents to bring their children or themselves into training. But, but the million dollar question is, how much is this going to cost? Where are you going to get the individuals to provide the, the teaching of this? And, you know, it, one of the hardest questions to ask nowadays is, is there any federal funding? Because some of it has stopped. So does the Early Development Council receive any federal funding? And is there other opportunities out there for this type of legislation?
So the Guam Early Learning Council does not directly receive federal funding. However, we, we are able to leverage resources. And to add to what Mrs. Flores mentioned earlier is enhancing the training that's already provided. And so is there federal funding available? I'm not sure. The million dollar question of how much is it going to cost to carry this out will really be dependent on how much do, do these agencies want to help, right? Because all of us see some type of, of professional development funding. All of us have the opportunity to make investments in early childhood, in education. And so I think getting the right players at the table and really discussing who's going to be responsible and how much resources they're willing to leverage would, should definitely be one of the first things we tackle when we start this discussion.
Well, thank you so much, Heidi, for that. And I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taidigui. Senator Trelawney?
This is Masi, Madam Chair. And to all of you who presented testimony, thank you. And I'm surprised really that, and glad to see the support of Public Health. And I think it just emphasizes what many of you have said, that this is really, no one used the word crisis, but it sounds like it is a crisis. When you look at the statistics and the findings of the bill, if you all agree with those, then it, it is showing that despite our efforts, we need, we have gaps. I think that's why the Early Learning Council was developed, because they recognized there were some gaps. Even with all the services we provide, we still can do better. We need to do better and more, because the statistics are showing that this is affecting not just their literacy, but behavior. It's affecting their ability to succeed in adult life as well. And so I'm, I'm kind of got goosebumps right now, sorry. But the, it's because, we rarely do this with the government, right? Where we make this big, huge goal and we're going to say, we're going to take care of this and we're really going to put it into practices. And it's very consistent with what's going on nationwide. For example, in juvenile justice reform, they are doing massive reforms of juvenile justice because of what they've recently learned about brains, right? Brain development was, is different than what they might have learned years ago and what, how we implemented our systems years ago. So we need to change that. And so this is an, it's a call to do that. It's a call to make sure, and I love how you put it, Public Health, that, that we are all giving the same message, that parents no longer would have to kind of rely on rumor, hearsay, you know, picnic table discussions. They would know, this is what all, everyone is saying. The teachers, the doctors, the counselors, everyone's saying the same exact thing. When I went to get my, you know, WIC certification, they said the same thing. Everywhere they go, they are being told the same thing. And they're being told it, as opposed to we, some, some of us know it, or you know it, but, but it's the parents who need to know it. And they need to know it, whether they're in all of these services or in special services, or whether they're just in regular services, they need to know it. So I think it's absolutely worth it, based on what you've done is proven to us why we really should invest in this. It doesn't even sound like a huge investment to me, that Public Health, because you, you have listed very specifically what needs to happen. It seems very similar to, like, just get everybody together. We will have an expert tell us exactly, so we're, so there's no debate. This is, this is the message we want to be concise on. These are the ones that are priority for us and we are going to get this out in all these collaborators in the same. I, you know, I understand maybe some agencies think this, this could be done better on some different levels, but I just think it's one of those things, like, like, if we can get it to every level, we will really be emphasizing that Guam is going for a major shift here. We are seeing at the tail end implications from the lack of, or the, the non-ideal early childhood development. We don't want to deal with it at that end. That's very costly, as you pointed out. This is the better way to deal with it. This is what studies show us how to do it. And I'm willing to, to say, yes, let's give that a try. And exciting if it, if we can really get consensus on this. I mean, I think everybody would agree, they're going to say maybe money could be spent someplace else, but money can be spent everywhere else. I mean, in all levels of this program, of all levels of early childhood development. But, but I love the, the part where we're going to get our message straight. And that might change, right, with more developments? So it's good that we have like almost an authority on, this is the message and this is what we are lacking here on Guam, is a, is a united message. It sounds so, some people say, oh, of course, we talk to the babies. But no, that's not correct, because I've seen it myself. And mothers are never told, well, I'm just never told, right? You're not necessarily told that. So if we're doing it, we're doing it because we've heard it somewhere or maybe we saw somebody else doing that. And, but, but to be told it is very different. Being told, it's like being told that breast milk is better if you can do that, right? So that was a unified message. They were successful at getting that across the community. And this is another one that I think we should just get across the community. So I thank the author for this bill and all of you for the work on it. This is Masi, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Senator Gumitata?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time to be with you all today. And thank you to the panel for your being here and testifying. Now, the bill references Guam's early childcare and education system, which is overseen and advised by the Guam Early Learning Council, whose vision is that of all of Guam's young children have healthy minds, bodies and spirits as the foundation for lifelong success. Madam Chair, to answer your question a bit earlier on the composition of the council's membership, based on Executive Order 2008-03, let me go ahead and read those members to you today. The Executive Director of Parent Information Resource Center, nonprofit organizations providing services and support to children, birth to five and their families, private childcare providers, the Guam Medical Society, pediatricians and family practitioners, I'm sure that's changed, the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the Childcare Bureau, child welfare, I think that's changed a bit too, the Guam Public School System, Head Start, the Guam Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, which is now our friends at Jibwic, the Guam Department of Labor, the One Stop Career Center, the University of Guam Cedars, the Guam Community College Early Childhood Program, the Guam Memorial Hospital, and Madam Chair, the Guam Legislative Chairs, including but not limited to Committees on Health, Education and Human Services. I wanted to share that with you. And I cannot forget the co-chairmanship of the council will be shared between the First Lady of Guam or the First Gentleman of Guam and Project Director of Project Tinatuhun, Guam's Early Childhood Comprehensive System. I'm not even sure if that is still going on today. Madam Chair, as we think about the roles and responsibilities, they're really there to help make recommendations on the most effective policy direction and methods to improve the coordination, quality and delivery of quality healthcare and education services for our young children on Guam. It is a bit disappointing to hear that they have not really met since March of 2024. With respect to English and Language Arts test results for elementary school students in our Guam Department of Education in their annual State of Public, Public Report, or yeah, Public Education Report for school year 23 to 24 that was released in October of 2024, it revealed that the assessment result for third grade ELA, again, English and Language Arts, 72%, did not meet the standard. 17% nearly met the standard and 7% met the standard and 3% exceeded the standard. The assessment result for fourth grade ELA, 74% did not meet the standard, 13% nearly met that standard and 8% met the standard and 5% exceeded the standard. And finally, Madam Chair, the assessment result for fifth graders in this ELA, 71% did not meet that standard, 15% nearly met the standard, 11% met the standard and 3% exceeded the standard. For the record, Madam Chair, comparatively from our Guam Academy Charter School test results from the start of the 2023-24 year, there was a 39% reduction from them in the number of students identified in the urgent intervention category, indicating a substantial improvement in early literacy outcomes from grades one through three. If I can ask anyone on the panel, what information about English and Language Test Arts results are available from others outside of the Guam Public School System? And how does this compare to them over the course of, I guess, to today? I mean, it's, if you can, yes, Dr. Souter, if you can help us understand this.
Yes, sir. Guam is tracking along with the national, with the national figures. The public school systems across the country are performing at the same levels that the Guam Public School System is performing. That sucks, we need to change it. We can be the, we can be the community that shows that this is not necessarily the case. And the, the, so I know it's, it's very disheartening, but the truth is, is that we're tracking with, with the country. So part of the problem is the lack of support that the American public school system gives to early childhood development. We should have a universal early childhood initiative. We were trending toward that several years ago and, and then it just bellied up because of the lack of, of understanding or support for that effort. But if we do not invest in the children at the early stages of their life, they're going to be problematic in the later stages of their life. And every, every study, all the research that has been done outside of Guam and even in Guam demonstrates that, you know? And so we have a real opportunity here to provide community consciousness intervention so that our people understand how critical they play a role, they can play a role in the development of children, even when they are not well-educated. See, a lot of people think that, oh, I can't really do that because that, that's what they learn when they're in school. By the time they go to school, it's too late, because they're already behind. Our people don't understand the power that they have just by talking with their kids on an ongoing basis and stretching language. There are very simple techniques, they don't require money. They just require understanding.
And Dr. Souter, I, listen, I agree with you that it sucks, but what sucks even more is that since March of 2024, we haven't been able to, a council to meet. And I think that's also contributing to that disservice to our kids. It's terrible news.
Because when, when Senator Perez calls us to her office to meet, many, many of the members of the council, we're not members of the council, but Sammy and I have done a lot of training through GCC for the early childhood centers. And the training that we're talking about is not very complex, in my view. It's It's a basic, you know, let the practitioners understand that they can convey to their end users who are the parents, right? Pregnant, you know, pregnant mothers, children, mothers of children or caretakers of children, that there's a role that they can play to improve the trajectory of their children if they just knew it. And it doesn't cost money, it costs, it costs commitment. And I, I believe that if our parents knew that they could make a significant difference by the way they talk with their children, that they will see the benefits as soon as their children get to school.
No, and I appreciate that because I think on the flip side of that, some, someone's talking to some people because at our six Guam Public Libraries, they're seeing an increase in visits over the years. I mean, in FY '21, it was 7,412 and '23, over 26,000 visits to our Guam Public Libraries. So at least in terms of reading, maybe we should be focusing on this effort on perhaps getting people to maybe read and maybe to be in line with what you're saying.
And Senator, we, we, we wrote a huge project called Guam Loves to Read, which was funded by the Educational Stabilization Fund and we've been, Sammy and I were part of that. So I say we because we worked with deal, with GCC. We've trained literacy navigators, they've been sent out, out to the schools to work with teachers and hundreds of thousands of books were purchased to fuel that, that resource in the public libraries as well as the, the school libraries. So when there is material and it's interesting material, right? And there's a push to get parents to go and read to their children, then they will because parents want their kids to succeed.
No, absolutely. And Madam Chair, I mean, I, I believe that the, the policy can be effective, but I think that we as a community, it should not be a bunch of words and a bunch of folks that are waiting to meet. We just have to be more proactive and I think that if this, if this is what we want and this is the policy that we're trying to set, I'm hoping other people in the community are going to see this and help me push people to read or perhaps take more interest in our kids' learning. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Thank you, Senator Gumitata. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps just a couple of comments to thank everyone for being here this afternoon. I think the first and foremost is trying to get the, these boards and commissions back online and see how we can get them to fully participate because without them, we're, what direction are going, we're going to be taking. And I believe the statute calls that if they miss three consecutive meetings that they can be replaced on the board. So I think we need to start going back and taking a look at that. And as for funding, interesting because I had several meetings while I was in DC and both US DOE, OSCE, Office of Special Education and the Administration for Community Living, both said they have funding that are available for programs such as this because these are the types of programs that are very important to the community and how we can continue to advance community learning. And I think that perhaps maybe public health, if they haven't done so already, reach out to these agencies. Charlie over at Office of Special Education and Dr. Jennifer over at Administration for Community Living, she's the Deputy Commissioner for Administration for Disabilities and see what is it that we can leverage to get funding if that's the issue. The only problem, and they said it over and over again, is if we apply for federal funding, we need to obligate it and expend it. The problem is we're not following through and we return federal funds. And they said that when it gets returned, it goes back to Treasury and then somebody else gets to utilize that funding. So they encouraged us to please do what we can, we apply, do what we can to expend the entire amount that we are given. And I think that's where a lot of our issues have fallen to the wayside is that we apply for these fundings and then we don't follow through, we get, we go halfway and then towards the end, we don't, we don't expand the entire amount. But that doesn't go to just the agencies themselves, it goes to our procurement process because a lot of times our procurement process are in the way of trying to expend the funds where already the timeline has come up and then there's nothing we can do except ask for an extension. And that's what they don't, they don't like to see is asking for extensions, they like to see it moving forward. But with that said, I'd just like to thank all of you for coming down today and I hope that we be able to make this type of legislation stronger because these are the things that our, our children need. Because I believe, Dr. Souter, you said it, right? The earlier they learn, the better off they'll be in life. And I think that's our obligation as a government is to do the best that we can for our children so that they can become successful in life, so that they can become the person that they want to be. So thank you all so very much for your testimonies today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Perez, you can close on your bill.
Thank you so much, Chair. So I want to thank everyone who's come out here today in, in support and to provide your testimony on Bill 138. Just to let everybody know, I know Division of Children's Wellness is, is a new division and so I know there's, there's, you guys are transitioning the Guam Early Learning Council, I believe you're absorbing that into your, your, your operation. So really it's Department of Public Health that is taking the lead and I'm so, so glad and appreciative of your support of this bill. Your insight input are invaluable and I look forward to working with the committee to strengthen this measure to explore additional ways we can support early child development, including funding, especially what the Vice Speaker just said. Definitely want to support any funding needs for your agency. This bill was written with the intention of raising awareness among those on the front lines, parents, caregivers and professionals who serve them about the critical role they play in shaping a child's development in the earliest years. These first years from birth to eight are foundational. By expanding a network of professionals who are trained to recognize key developmental milestones and to offer support, guidance and resources, we are creating a system that can help set children on a strong path long before they ever reach a classroom. Whether it is a healthcare provider, a social worker, a child, early childhood educator or a caseworker administering public services, every point of contact is an opportunity to support parents and caregivers in ways that have a lasting impact. Bill 138 helps ensure those opportunities are not missed. Maya Payne Smart, author of Reading for Our Lives, reminds us that, quote, "It's impossible to teach your child everything they need to know to thrive in an unpredictable world, but when you focus on reading, you can rest assured that you are building the skill that supports all others." That is what this bill is about, focusing on the foundational skills, strengthening the systems around our families and giving every child in Guam the opportunity to succeed. Sis, this is Massey for your time and support.
Thank you, Senator Perez and to our panel for providing your testimony on Bill 100, Dr. Souter, Mrs. Flores, Dr. Shea and Mrs. Kanata. The bill now moves to its markup phase and we will take into consideration all of your comments today as well. Mrs. Kanata, we will be talking with you and the Department of Public Health on the status of the Guam Early Learning Council and possibly updating the enabling law. So thank you so much. We will now move on to accept public testimony on Bill 123 introduced by Senator Teresa Terlahe. Senator, you may open on your bill.
Sis, this is Massey, Madam Chair. So for context, Bill 123 represents the culmination of some work done by the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners over several years in collaboration with their former legal counsel, former Assistant Attorney General Robert Weinberg. This was to modernize rules governing healing arts practices. Throughout this effort, recommendations were made particularly under the leadership of Chairperson Dr. Mimi Balajaja for the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners to transfer licensing of physician assistance to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. There was also a Bill 120 introduced, but that bill has been withdrawn. I just want everyone to know it's been withdrawn because that bill was incomplete. It did not move the PA Physician Assistant Prescriptive Authority where, from where it was located in the clinical psychologist section over to the PA chapter as recommended in the former council's draft. So that's what Bill Number 123 does. Bill 123 moves the jurisdiction of physician assistance from the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. That's the board then that will be licensing physicians' assistance. According to the American Medical Association, the regulation of physician assistance by medical boards is already the prevailing model across the United States. In 43 states, PAs fail under the authority of the medical board. Only eight states, Arizona, California, Iowa, Massachusetts, Michigan, Rhode Island, Tennessee and Utah, maintain independent regulatory boards for PAs. By following the majority approach, Guam ensures alignment with best practices and medical regulation. So the bill clarifies that a CPA, a collaborative practice agreement with a supervising physician will be submitted to the now Guam Board of Medical Examiners, which will define the conditions under which a PA may prescribe, administer or dispense medications. The bill continues existing requirements, including that PAs meet national certification standards, complete continuing medical education, are bound by a code of ethics specific to PAs. It moves the current rules for PAs to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners and allows the Medical Examiner's Board to amend or establish additional rules. The bill clarifies the current application and registration for approval by the board. So PAs currently submit this application and registration for approval of their supervision. And this bill requires a collaborative practice agreement, just a more formal document with, according to the bill, a detailed scope of practice, authority of the PA in agreement with the supervising physician to administer, prescribe and dispense drugs and it says schedule two to five drugs. So this is by agreement with the physician. The bill is not intended to change in any way the prescriptive authority of PAs currently that I expect maybe handled in a separate bill. It, that being said, I confirmed with Attorney Weinberg today that on page six of this bill, Section 121609E should be deleted because that inconsistently specifies that physician must be available on the premises. But in 121601D, we already provide for supervision by a physician on premises or by telecommunication under certain circumstances. So I'm going to be proposing to the chairperson to, if, in committee to delete E so that there's not inconsistent and that we can remain consistent with existing authorities. The bill also references in some instances the podiatry member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners because there was another bill that has had a public hearing that would also move the podiatrist over to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. So if that one passes, there will be those two additional members on the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. That's pretty much it for the bill. I hope it's clear. It's a little clumsy or awkward, I think, I'm going to admit that because even in my reading, there, there's still a chapter that exists in the code for podiatrist, I mean, sorry, for physician's assistance. So that's going to remain intact, but there were many other provisions in the Guam Board of Allied Health laws and rules that we are trying to move over with very minimal changes, hopefully, that are outlined in the bill. So that's really the intent and I thank you, Madam Chair, for having this hearing on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Terlahe. We will now accept testimony from our panel and we will begin to my right with Mrs. Kanata once again.
Good afternoon. Heidi Kanata, Chief Children's Services Administrator with the Division of Children's Wellness under the Department of Public Health and Social Services, here today to, to read into the record written testimony on behalf of Director Teresa Ariola. I do see that the testimony was combined with Bill 120 and 123, so I will read it as it's written. Hafada Chairwoman Sabrina Salas-Metanani and Senators of the 38th Guam Legislature, thank you for the opportunity to present testimony on Bill Number 120 dash 38 COR, which proposes the transfer of physician assistant licensure and regulation from the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, GBAHE, to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, GBME, under the Department of Public Health and Social Services Health Professional Licensing Office. Additionally, thank you for the opportunity to present testimony regarding our support on Bill Number 123 dash 38, which updates prescriptive authority and adopts rules and regulations and code of ethics for physician assistants on our island. There are currently 30 licensed physician assistants with active licenses under the GBAHE as of writing this testimony. This bill represents a critical step forward in modernizing Guam's healthcare regulatory framework and recognizing the essential role that physician assistants play in our healthcare system. PAs are highly trained licensed professionals who provide high-quality medical care under the supervision of physicians. They are an integral part of the care team, especially in underserved areas where access to healthcare can be limited. Including PAs on the GBME ensures that decisions affecting the profession include perspectives and expertise of those practicing in the field. This inclusion promotes balanced, informed policymaking and enhances oversight that reflects the realities of medical practice in Guam. Additionally, the adoption of specific rules, regulations and a code of ethics tailored for PAs brings clarity and accountability to the profession. It aligns Guam with national best practices and helps maintain high standards of care, professionalism and public trust. If this proposed legislation passes, it would create a more streamlined structure in the medical field by ensuring physician assistants are regulated and supervised under a single licensing board. The Department of Public Health and Social Services agrees placing physician assistants under the GBME could eliminate unnecessary administrative complexities and enhance patient safety. If enacted, physician assistants would be held to the same standards as national physicians and physician assistants, a change that stands to improve both the quality of care and the level of service we expect from our medical professionals. Updating and clarifying the prescriptive authority for physician, physician assistants is a significant step towards optimizing healthcare delivery on our island. By adopting clear rules, regulations and a code of ethics for PAs, it reinforces patient safety and professional accountability. By passing this bill, the legislature, legislature affirms its commitment to a collaborative, well-regulated healthcare environment that supports both providers and patients. I respectfully urge you to pass Bill Number 120 dash 38 COR and take this meaningful step toward improving healthcare governance on our island. Thank you for your time and consideration. Director Teresa C. Ariola.
Thank you, Ms. Kanata. Sir? Mr. Stanley? Could you please turn on your microphone and, and speak closely into the mic?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Ed Stanley. I'm a physician assistant. I have practiced on Guam for 23 years. I'm with the FHP Clinic. I have served on the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners two separate prior terms, totaling a little over seven years. So I am familiar with the licensure and, and requirements for physician assistants on Guam and in the U.S. as well. I'm also licensed in the state of Kentucky. I thank Senator Terlahe for moving this bill forward. I first talked about this sort of thing with then Senator Mike Cruz and also with then Governor Felix Camacho. So this, this has been an idea that's been around for a while. I also thank my colleague, Dr. Eusebio, for moving forward this as well. It's an idea that's been around for a while. I had a few things that I wanted to talk about that I, I saw as contradictory within the two bills, but that has been resolved prior to this meeting and I, I thank Senator Terlahe for that as well. I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. I think all PAs on Guam will be happy with it. I can't think of a reason that anyone would be in opposition to this bill. There are a couple of other minor tweaks in language, most of which can be handled within the rules and regulations and not really within the body of the bill itself. Again, there's some contradiction on prescriptive authority, whether it'll be all scheduled drugs or, you know, only fours and fives. But again, that can be handled through rules and regs. My experience elsewhere has involved some states allow the physician and physician assistant supervisory agreement. Some states use a supervisory agreement in lieu of a collaborative practice agreement because it is a supervisory relationship. Yes, we collaborate a lot, but in the end, the physician is the supervisor. And so they will exercise that supervisory authority, you know, in all actions. But with that supervisory authority, the physician can delegate to the physician assistant classes of drugs to prescribe, and even within those classes can limit certain drugs to be prescribed or not prescribed in this individual practice. You know, that's the beauty of a both collaborative and supervisory agreement. So again, I think everyone will be in favor of that as well. One last thing I would ask that maybe clarification or a little more verbiage added into the bill. The physician assistant title has been an evolving thing for several years, and the American Association of Physician Assistants has adopted physician associate as the current term. And they're involved in a transition, you know, to move that forward. Several states are allowing the use of either/or as, you know, the, shall we say, advertised term or the title. I read just this week that Oregon and Maine have adopted physician associate as the new standard title. So I would like to see something in the Guam bill saying that that title would be recognized, either/or title, or as advised by the AAPA or the NCCPA, which is also referenced in the bill as the National Certifying Organization for Physician Assistance. Okay. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Dr. Shea?
Can I let Dr. Eusebio talk first?
Dr. Eusebio.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senators, I appreciate the focus on maintaining the highest medical standards. That's important that we want to try to provide in Guam. The more you think about trying to provide the highest medical standards, the better it is for your constituents, for our patients, and for everybody.
Dr. Eusebio, for the record, if you could please state your full name and title.
I'm sorry. My name is Ricardo Eusebio. I'm a general vascular surgeon here in Guam. Currently, I'm the acting CMO, GMH. I've previously served as the chairman of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. So that's my role, and that's why I'm here. As I was saying, it's important that we talk about providing the best medical care here in Guam, and that's something that I've seen through my life here, through my practice over 30 years of practice here, that we have gone from a certain level of care to what we are providing now, which is so much better than before. If we are to maintain this, then the focus of the medical board should be solely on physicians. And I think that if we were, which is the reason why my feeling is that I am against this bill. Why? Number one, the scope of practice differences, there are significant differences in our scope of practice. And I think it's naive to think that the level of care is the same. It's not the same. There's a different training, the different roles that the physician provides as compared to what the physician assistant provides. My training, I spent four years of college, four years of medical school, six years of postgraduate training after that. PAs spend four years of college and then perhaps a 24, 27 months of training after that, basically a master's level of care. So there's a significant difference in terms of our education, and our responsibilities correspond to that level of education. And what I don't want to happen is that I don't want to blur those responsibilities. I don't want patients to think that when a person comes to, when they go to the clinic, that the person wearing their white coat is a doctor. And a lot of them think this. Whether they say they're a doctor so-and-so or what, it's important not to blur the lines because the patients can be confused in terms of these distinctions. There can be, in the board level, conflicts of interest, and that is, there can be oversight bias because physicians are in the board or even as stated, as recommended in this bill, that a physician also be part of the medical board. The dominant number of people in the board is going to be physicians, and there's going to be oversight bias in that sense. And physician assistants may feel a sort of favoritism in terms of whether regulatory things are being done and might feel that there is a dilution in their representation of the board. So that's also, that's a potential conflict of interest. There's a difference in the regulatory complexity of this because of our differences in our licensure, differences in our training, and also education. So the board has to be able to balance those priorities, and it's important to be able to do that. And then also, I'm not sure that you understand that if your concern is that the physician assistant is basically an extender of the physician and therefore should be under the physician and their board, then the next thing you know, you're going to have not only physician assistants, what about nurse practitioners? What about the certified nurse anesthetist? What about the certified nurse midwives? All those are physician extenders. All those are people who work in the team and collaborate with the physician. All of them work basically under the supervisory role of the physician. Are they going to be placed under the medical board too? Are they going to be asking to be placed in medical board because they're being supervised by a physician? It's the same thing. So in addition to that, the discipline standards, should the discipline standards be the same? Should we discipline a physician who violates the rules the same as we discipline the physician assistants? Those are other issues that you have to consider because these are issues that the board has to deal with. Thus, the issue of the highest medical standard, as I started saying, requires a heavy balance, having to balance the autonomy, the supervision, and regulatory clarity, which can only be accomplished by having a medical board singularly focused on physicians alone. Today, the number of on-island physicians are around, I would say, 207, 208, something of that nature. And this has ballooned to 813. Why? Because we're using telemedicine now. So you have this board which consists of five, six people, having to deal with 800 people, and you want to add physician assistants to that with limited funding, with the amount of work that these full-time physicians have to do? I think it adds, it places an added burden, and I think it's a bad thing for you to do. So my feeling is that the members, as I said, are full-time physicians and with their limited funding need to be able to focus on what they do, and that is the regulatory and investigative tasks that they need to do for complaints in regards to physicians who violate the rules and regulations and also to make sure that they are protecting the citizens of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eusebio. Dr. Shea?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I studied my name before, Dr. Shea. I'm a board certified OB-GYN, and I've been on Guam for nearly 29 years, and I've got to know my colleague, Dr. Eusebio, ever since I landed on Guam. He's been here a lot longer than me. He's got more white hair than me, too. Be as may, I kind of tend to agree with Dr. Eusebio as far as the makeup of the board. The makeup of the board, it's important to recognize that when you dilute a board that's supposed to be focused on, originally based on the physician. Physicians as a term basically should be used by MD or DOs. Right now, if you add two more board members, podiatry and also PA, I think you're going to have, I think, and there's two public members, correct, on the board? Is anybody on the makeup of the board right now? Who's on there?
Yes, should be here. There's currently one public member.
One public member. Okay. So one public member, and then, so if you add this one particular one on there, so you have, how many non-MD members on there? Non-physician members? Would be total of three, correct? You have a podiatry, who's a non-MD. You also have, if you have a physician assistant, would be another one, right? There's a non-MD, so you have three. So it would be three, and then you have six MDS, DOs on there?
Six, yes.
You have six on there. So, you know, and then later on, I assume that because the supervisory role, if that is the goal of the supervisory role because the PA should be under the Guam board, I can see Dr. Eusebio's point of view that, hey, you know, it's going to get more diluted because certainly midwives, I supervise midwives, you know, I also supervise nurse practitioners as well, and, you know, but they're not under the Guam board. They're under the nursing board, they're also under the, I think midwives is actually under Allied Health Board, maybe the nursing board, I think. So nursing board. Yeah, so those are different boards. I mean, if you're going to dilute everybody like that, perhaps we should just have one board. Get rid of the nursing board, get rid of the Allied Health Board, and just one big happy board, right? That way, you supervise everybody. That way, you don't have to go through all these, you know, changes. So that, I'm just going to leave it at that. So if you are going to move on with this bill and place the PAs on here, I just need to, you know, you just need to be aware of the dilution aspect of it because it is difficult to look at, you know, physician assistants and, you know, all that. The other aspect of it is, I think Stanley brought, I was thinking about the associate part, physician associate. I don't mind the associate name because, you know, for my clinic, it's Dr. Shea's clinic and associates. But when I refer to associates, I meant to say physician specialist. For example, Dr. Hirata, who's in maternal fetal medicine, he's my associate. I have a GYN oncologist who's my associate. So there may be some confusion in that, but if the national standard is moving towards associate, you know, I think it's okay. It's just that it's going to blur the line a little bit more for patients. And right now, patients are like, you know, they are getting confused. Even though you tell them, I'm not a physician, I'm a physician assistant, they still get a little confused. But my particular testimony, like Stanley said, and I think Senator Trelawhy had mentioned already, is that there was a sort of oversight, mislabeling or, you know. But I'll go through my testimony. Now, when we refer to page, let's go through page four on the bill. Page four, line, section five, line 23 on, "The Guam Board of Medical Examiners has nine members who should be nominated and appointed by the governor with the advice of the concerned legislature." I would tend to amend that, to read, "Guam Board of Medical Examiners composed of nine members who shall be nominated and appointed by the governor or," put that "or" in there, "the legislature, or by the people of Guam, or by an application process for all providers in the community if the candidate is deemed to be board, to the board is qualified." And the reason I bring that up is because the, when you look at the Guam law, I think GCA 1212201, it states that the primary responsibility and obligation of the Board of Medical Examiners is to protect the people of Guam. So, you know, so they're not there to serve at the pleasure of the governor, and they're really not there to serve at the pleasure of the legislature. They're there to serve at the pleasure of the people of Guam, to protect them. So when you put the sole appointment to one particular person, then they become serving at the pleasure of one person. I don't think that's the goal of what the board should be doing. And maybe that's perhaps why that you have a limited number of pool of physicians who wants to serve on the board. So someone who is really qualified, they should have the opportunity to be able to apply to serve on the Board of Medical Examiners. And I think that people will want that. And there has been incidents where we think a physician shouldn't be licensed among the community members, and then we hear, oh, we got a call from somebody that said, hey, I want that person licensed. And all of a sudden, they're in a community. So to create that non-biased view of the board, I think you should have other opportunities. And within the bill, I read that, and I think there's an opportunity for you to change it. All right? So I'll just leave it at that. But again, you know, the Guam Board of Examiners should remain unbiased and should be politically free from influences of politicians, you know, out of loop and legislative body. This is to ensure the true duties to serve and protect the public. Now, page five, line seven, this is, so you know I did read the bill. So, okay, page five, line seven, and nothing against Dr. Eusebio here as the medical director, okay? It says here, "One physician board member shall be the medical director of GMH who meets the above criteria." You know, I believe this position should be removed. And then part of the reason why is that, you know, and you may argue that, well, the position of the hospital director should have a seat, kind of automatic nomination to the board. You know, why should that be? You know, I mean, what is the reason for that? I don't understand that because the hospital is run by the governor. He has the organic ag, he's going to, he gets an additional vote on the board, and that creates undue bias again. So I think that position should be removed. Page six. Page six, line 12, this is also an opportunity for you to amend something that I think is doing injustice for the health care providers on Guam. Line 12, it says, the CSR, that you require a CSR. Now, we encourage that removal of the Guam CSR. That's a controlled substance registration. As long as a federal DEA, Drug Informants Agency license is, certificate is obtained by the provider, many jurisdictions do not require a local CSR. In fact, Guam really has the highest cost for providers for any prescribing registration, and the majority of state doesn't even require CSR. So I think that should be removed. In fact, when Guam Department of Public Health raised the rate from $150 to $500, that's over 350%, we'd even have a notice of that. None of the physician got a notice that they was going to increase that particular rate. So just one example, in Texas, the Texas Legislature eliminated the requirement for physicians and other practitioners to hold a separate controlled substance issued by the Texas Department of Safety and Public Health. This change took place about 10 years ago, and the legislative intent was to simplify the regulatory oversight by removing the, the regulatory oversight by removing the duplicative state-level registration, which streamlines the licensing processing for physicians. By doing this, the legislature maintained the requirement, okay, for a federal DEA to control, to continue to prescribe controlled substances, but they removed the need for a secondary state-level permit. They don't feel the need for that. And as of September, uh, twenty sixteen, any practitioner who holds a valid DEA registration is legally authorized to prescribe when no separate state requires CSR. Just to remind you that the DEA, I think, lasts for about three years. If I, is that right? Three years? Three years. It costs us about eight hundred dollars on a federal level. All right? A PA's gotta pay that, too, by the way. A federal level, three years. On Guam, it's five hundred dollars per year. And it's fifteen hundred for three years. I have no idea what they do with the money, but, you know, I just wanna say that we don't need it. All right? We don't need a Guam CSR. Um, so that is, uh, that is something that I think that we, we have the opportunities within this bill to change that. Um, and page six, um, going back to line twenty-four to twenty-seven, and I think that, that issue is already addressed because there was a discrepancy, um, that, you know, uh, the physician has to be on the premises. So that's already deleted. But I think that, that's pretty much what I have to say through the entire bill. Um, other than that, if I notice anything different, I'll certainly send an email to Senator Chulahi. Now, Dr. Lum also has a letter, I think she emailed a letter to Dr., uh, to Senator Chulahi, and she disagreed with the bill, she doesn't wanted it. Um, but at the end of the last line, I, I kinda spoke to her a little bit, and I think the aspect of her concern, um, is not to babysit the physician assistants, because they have the opportunity to actually expand and do their work. But, um, she's actually remain concerned about the supervising aspect of it. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shea. Thank you to the panel. If you could just please remain seated as, uh, to take on any questions from, uh, my colleagues, starting with the bill's author, Senator Chulahi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for your testimony. I appreciate it. And, um, I appreciate your concerns, especially those that, where you, you point out how many physicians already are, um, uh, under the duty of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to, to regulate, right? To ensure safety. I very much appreciate that. However, I think, my understanding that the Allied Health Board also struggling with, uh, their numerous different types of professionals that they have to regulate, and because of the nature of physician's assistance, they feel that physicians can better regulate, supervise, and make sure that they are abiding by their scope of practice. And I read the AMA, American Medical Association, uh, also, their policy addresses regulation of physician assistants. They advocate support of maintaining the authority of medical licensing and regulatory boards to regulate the practice of medicine through oversight of physicians, physician assistants, and related medical personnel. They oppose legislative efforts to establish autonomous regulatory boards meant to license, regulate, and discipline physician assistants outside of the existing state medical licensing and regulatory bodies' authority and purview. And, and then I, as I told you earlier, the different states, forty-three of them, do it the way we're proposing to do it, is put it under the licensing board. And it's really, I know you're saying you have a much different level of education, training, and all of that, but it's because of that, I think, that the Allied Health Board feels that you are better able, equipped to, to, yeah, oversee this. And it's really just, it's an oversight. And, and actually, your concern, Dr. Usabio, about, you know, that, um, physician assistants, because they work for physicians, and now they're going to be regulated by physicians, but I think there were some physician assistants that don't want to be regulated by physicians because that's who their employers are. But, but I just think it's, it's, it's kind of the consensus across the nation that an allied health board with some other expertise is not going to be able to adequately oversee this practice of medicine that physician assistants are doing. Now, they're not doctors, they're not anywhere near your scope of practice, but that's the other thing. Because we're requiring them to make a very detailed scope of practice and supervision agreement, it's technical. And that's another thing, I think they want, that the physician board is going to be better equipped to, to oversee. But I, I definitely hear your concerns and will consider those and discuss those with, with the committee chair and the Allied Health Board. But they really feel the expertise is with your, your board. But this, by putting them under your, the medical board, licensing board, in no way increases their authority or, you know, their training. So they, that's another, you must limit them to their training, right? Their scope to their training. And that's why oversight of those supervision agreements, somebody has to review those and see if, you know, like you said, we are going to be confusing patients, we would be allowing too much. And the rules in particular, you know, I think they tried to address some of those concerns. They, I saw one of the rules says, "Physicians assistants must wear badges that very clearly show patients that they are physician assistants and not doctors." And so that, and it, this gives the medical board the authority to create the rules, right? And I think because of those concerns, to make sure that patients, it's really for the patients, so that they're very clear. The, um, I, I agree with you, Dr. Shea, about the board composition. However, that's a, to me, a different scope of the bill. Like, for example, the appointment, who will appoint those members? I like the idea. I'm not, uh, I would, I would look at the organic act and see if that's something possible. Because right now, all our boards are patterned this way because of the organic act authority of the governor. It's very clear. Governor appoints, we, we approve. Um, I'll, I'll see if there are any exceptions to that, but it does allow for, um...
Right, but you know, I'm looking into Jack. I think the organic act, if I read it correctly, it does, what I suggest in amending does not take away the ability for the governor to, to appoint. If I say remove the governor from appointments, then certainly that removes her power. But it's adding, it's adding something extra to the legislation that allows the people of Guam to have more control over who they put into the board.
By nominating to the governor or by nominating directly to the board?
By, either, if there's positions available, if you qualify, you should be able to apply to a position for the board. Or it can be nominated by the legislature, but, you know, if, if that's the way it is with organic act states, but it does not prohibit, I don't think it prohibits the law to be changed to add, um, it's not taking away the organic powers of the, the governor by just adding more to it, another option, thinking out of the box.
Sure. Yeah, I like that. I'm just gonna point out to you, uh, GVB, there was a lawsuit, uh, when the legislature tried to establish a law that GVB board would be established in a different way other than governor appointment, and that was ruled inorganic. So anyways, we have to draw the line, and we will consider. I will consider what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, good. And the point about the AMA, the American Medical Association, to which I'm a member for, I don't know, thirty decades, three decades, um, I think that the resolution of what they suggest for AMA is that they do not want the physician's assistant to have their own regulatory board. It doesn't mean that, um, we don't have oversight for them. In fact, right now, um, on the allied healthcare board, we still have to have oversight of the physician assistant. The same collaborative agreement is still has to be there for them to be licensed under the allied health board. So they still need to work with individual physicians. Same, there's no changes as far as the licensing of PAs, even if it comes under the board. Now, the point about, um, the PAs being regulated by physicians, we can, it's, that doesn't change anything. I think what Dr. Usabio is concerned is that now when you put the PA on, on, on the board, for example, then the PA in turn is regulating us, licensing us, because now they have a vote on who they can license. So the training part of it, they can't say, "Hey, you know, I, I," PA can't, I don't, I don't know, they're a good PA if they know more than Dr. Usabio or, or myself with the training that we have. Um, so that's the, I think that's the concern there. Um, so I, I'm just, I'm just, uh, I'm just saying that as a, as a point of information where that has to be addressed. The other point in the, within the bill is that, and it may be a good thing or it may be a bad thing, okay? But I'm all about parity, right? I've always said, "I want parity." I don't think anybody else. If you're gonna pay somebody one dollar, you gotta pay me one dollar. Physician assistant, in the rules and regs, it requires the physician assistant to be currently certified by the National Commission on Certifications. Right now, physicians are not required to be board certified. So you, you, you're requiring the physician assistant to be certified, but you're not requiring the supervising physician to be certified or, or have a current certification. So that's, to me, that's a little double standard in the rules and regs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I, I get it. I would assume that they can't call themselves a physician in Guam unless they are actually licensed.
Well, they're gonna get certification. They have to pass their certification as the initial exam. But the law says here in the rules and regs is that at the time of renewal, you have to provide evidence of current certification. There have, there are physicians who are certified, but they, they're not, no longer certified. They're just not maintaining their certification. So if, what I'm saying, if you're gonna require someone to be board certified with a current certification, then perhaps the supervising physician should also be certified.
Okay.
Um, I don't think that, um, the American Medical Association is a good, good example of, um, an organization that, um, we should follow necessarily. The reason why I say that is because the majority of physicians in the United States are not members of the medical, American Medical Association. They are not. The philosophies, the way the organization is run, goes against the majority of physicians in the United States. That's the first thing that I wanna say. The second thing is that because of the fact that the Allied Health Board feels uncomfortable dealing with physician assistants, the answer is not to take away the physician's assistants and put them somewhere else. Maybe the answer is to, is to teach them how, how they're supposed to regulate. Maybe they can, um, work in collaboration with the Guam Medical Board in order to, um, be more educated and, um, get some ideas as to how to, um, regulate physician assistants and feel comfortable. The, the thing is, I think the important thing is to, to perhaps open the collaboration between the boards so that, especially with the Allied Health Board that has so many different specialties in it, that maybe they need help in that sense. But the answer is not to take somebody who doesn't belong somewhere else and put them there just because they're being supervised.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Again, um, I appreciate all your concerns. I think, uh, we have to consider the practicality of that. If we are trying to govern the practice of medicine, which the supervisory agreements delegate to physician assistants, then we should supervise the practice of medicine by those who are qualified to supervise that practice, those exact practices that you are delegating. And I know you pointed out there are others like nurse practitioners. This is a whole, it's a dichotomy in our community right now. Nurse practitioners were given the authority by previous legislatures to prescribe without supervision. So they're, they're in a different category, which we're not trying to resolve by this bill, but, uh, that, they, yeah, and they're under the nursing board, right? So for, perhaps, I mean, it's in doctors' interest if they're concerned about the quality of care on Guam, that they are going to be very concerned about what gets done in their, their name through a physician assistant. And, uh, so I will, I'm open to continued discussions. Mrs. Massey, Madam Chair, I know the time is up.
Thank you, Senator Chulahi.
Even, even the nurse practitioners have some oversight authority. They cannot just go out there and hang their shingle and say, "I'm, you know, I'm going to take care of all the patients." There's still somebody that is overseeing them.
Thank you, Dr. Usabio. Senator Tadegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, you know, I, I am in full support of this, uh, legislation. I'm supportive of moving, you know, the physician's assistants under the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, and the change aligns with national standards and acknowledges the medical training and responsibility of, of PAs. Since they work in direct coordination with the physicians, unified oversight improves patient safety, strengthens supervisions, and simplifies regulation. It also updates prescribing authority and ensures that healthcare delivery in Guam stays current and efficient. As I looked at some of the legislation in other jurisdictions, there are quite a bit of jurisdictions that fall into the same scenario. So, um, I appreciate the, um, good author of this legislation and ask to be a co-sponsor of this. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, I'm looking through the bill, of course, in regards to the recommendation to remove, um, C subsection two, a current Guam controlled substance registration from the Department of Public Health and Social Services. So, yeah, I'm just kind of curious if you can, maybe you can explain, um, it seems there might be some, uh, like it's, there's lack of uniformity regarding what type of drugs a PA can prescribe based on, uh, the physician that's supervising them? Or is, yeah, if you can explain that to me, what, what, what is, um, the requirement for physician assistants in regards to prescription of drugs?
Well, the PAs technically, they can prescribe controlled substances. Controlled substances are like opiates, you know, Tylenol codeins, I know, things like that. They're usually schedule two and schedule three antibiotics, burr-controlled pills. Maybe Stanley can add to that, you know? What do you prescribe? You, you, can you prescribe Percocet? No.
Under current Guam law, physician assistants can prescribe class four, or schedule four and schedule five. And those do include some controlled substances, specifically, uh, of the lower level, cough syrup with codeine, for example, tramadol, which is a, uh, mild opioid narcotic. No, we cannot prescribe Percocet, which is oxycodone, which is a category two, schedule two drug.
I gotta read first. I gotta read four is the, or, as you go up, you can't.
Yeah, fours and fives. However, um, again, I have practiced here for twenty-three years. When I first arrived, we could prescribe category two, uh, through five. And that, uh, over the years changed with rewriting of legislation. When I practiced in Kentucky, initially, I could not prescribe, uh, anything but category fours and fives. That has now changed to allow, uh, category, uh, three in Kentucky. West Virginia, where I have also practiced, allows, uh, prescription of category two through five. Quite a few states, it, it, it's a patchwork of laws, shall we say. And the, uh, the patchwork also applies to nurse practitioners, um, but to a lesser degree, because their, um, political lobby has done a much better job of helping get the laws written, uh, you know, in their favor to allow complete, uh, prescriptive authority.
Okay, so if we can maybe add, so by removing two, the current Guam controlled substance registration, does that, what effect does that have, if any?
Um, as I pointed out earlier, there, there are some, uh, contradictions in this particular law as it stands. One paragraph says, "Any scheduled drug, two through five." Another paragraph says, "Any scheduled drug except twos and threes." So, um, and that's how we practice right now, any scheduled drug except twos and threes. It doesn't have a big, um, impact on... It doesn't have a big impact on where I practice, because for the most part, we don't prescribe that sort of medication anyway. But if I'm treating a patient who has severe pain, say a patient with a fracture, and Category, you know, IIs and IIs have not managed their pain, then I will talk with my supervising physician and get a cosignature on a Category III or Category II medication. And that's where the collaborative practice agreement comes in. But I cannot prescribe those levels of medication autonomously.
Okay. So, I think ultimately, the language should reflect that it's really dependent upon the responsibility of the physician, supervising physician. That's ultimately what it comes down to.
And again, that can be, as in some states, it can be delineated in the supervisory agreement and/or the collaborative practice agreement, that when I work with this particular physician, I can prescribe these medications from this formulary. It can be specified on an individual basis. Or it can be specified in the law on a blanket basis, but still, the physician oversight is there, because in the other paragraph, it says that all charts have to be cosigned within, under Guam law, a seven-day period. So, if I prescribed a medication today, and Dr. Shea cosigns my chart three days from now, and he says, "Ed, you prescribed Percocet for this patient. I don't think that's a good idea." And we discuss it, and we contact the patient, we change the prescription, he exercises his supervisory authority, and we both collaborate in the care of the patient. And he tells me not to ever do that again.
Okay, so removing that item II is not gonna have an effect?
Removing the item II, I'm sorry.
Page 6, line 12, and 13 to 13?
No, that would not have any effect at all, and I thank Dr. Shea for bringing that up. It's been a frustration with a lot of us. As he says, "I pay $800 for the same DEA that he does, and I pay $500 for the same CSR that he does, but I can only prescribe cough syrup."
You know, I speak for, I would say 100%, okay, I shouldn't say 100, never 100, 99.9% of healthcare providers, that we agree that CSR on Guam should be removed. That's a duplicate, unnecessary process.
It doesn't allow you to do anything that the DEA doesn't, and vice versa. I mean, it's duplication of effort and duplication of expense.
Majority of the states got rid of their CSR.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, thank you for that, but I guess perhaps, maybe in some future case, the drugs may not duplicate.
I don't think so. I think if you're gonna move forward with this bill, you can actually change the law by removing that section.
Okay.
You can amend it. In another legislation, you're gonna have public health coming in, "Oh, no, we need that $500. We need that $500 per year." But when we ask them, "What do you do with it?" Well, we have you registered, and we watch how you prescribe. Well, DEA is already doing that, the pharmacies are already doing that. So, really, what are you gonna do with that money? It's just an unnecessary thing that we have to expend, and then maybe we have to pass it on to the patients down the road. So, I think it's unnecessary. So, I think if you can change it, I would change it. That's the issue with a lot of these things, because public health will always come in, and they always, well, they increase the price of the CSR without even letting us know. That's the highest price increase I've ever heard in Guam, from $150 to $500, just like that, boom. We heard about it afterwards. And public health really has nothing to show us what they did with the money.
Yeah, I just wanted clarity on whether it was duplicative or not, and maybe there's something in local law that is different. So, that's all, I just wanted to get clarity on these issues.
Yeah, I would encourage you to get rid of it, because it really doesn't need it, because we're already paying for the federal side of the DEA, you know?
All right, thank you so much for your response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And going back to Stanley's point, it is state by state, as far as the category goes, whether you can prescribe narcotics or not. So, that, and, you know, you can actually limit that by the individual provider, whether or not in a collaborative agreement. Let's say you change the law, and right now, the law says you can only prescribe Schedule IV and V. It doesn't allow II and III. But if you want to allow PAs to prescribe Percocet or morphine or...
Depends on the state. Every state has different regulatory...
But if you wanna change that, you can.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Guma Tata?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a lot of questions, just if I could, I'm just gonna get right to the point. Can I ask, in terms of the Guam Medical Association on Bill 123, what input did you all provide in the bill's development?
What development?
What input, if any, did GMA provide in this bill's development?
None.
Okay. Specific to the collaborative practice agreement, or the CPA that's described in this bill between a PA and a Guam-licensed physician as the supervising physician, what CPA-like arrangement is in place right now between PAs and their supervising physician? And do these mutually agreed-upon agreements identify alternate physicians in the absence of the primary physician recognized under the CPA? Minimum can you provide?
That already exists. In order for the PA to be licensed on Guam, that already exists. The biggest difference is that you're moving, you're taking, what should I say? You can't, taking my pen, which is unchanged, and give it to Dr. Yusebio. That's it. Yeah. Right?
If I may, if I may address this issue, Senator, Dr. Shea. Every two years, when I renew my license, I have to submit, you know, of course, the application to renew the license, and then I submit, most recently, 14 collaborative practice agreements. They're all pretty much the same. It's a boilerplate document. It's about an eight-page document that goes over things I can do, things I can prescribe, conditions I can treat, and it's signed by Dr. Dulai, as my primary supervising physician, Dr. Tam, as my secondary supervising physician, Dr., as my thirdendary and fourthendary, and up to, I have had as much as 14 supervising physicians. And that is because, you know, the nature of the type of work we do. Last night, I worked with Dr. Tam, and so she will cosign all of my charts from last night. Tomorrow morning, I work with Dr. Frickle, and she will cosign all of my charts from tomorrow. So, I have a supervising physician at all times, but it's not the same one all the time. So, the, there's really nothing new in this law as far as how it's pertaining to our supervisory or collaborative agreements. All of this is in place right now. There's nothing new being created in this one.
Okay, and if I can, let me just ask one more question, and I don't know if anyone on the panel can answer, but for the record, how many nurse practitioners are authorized in Guam to prescribe medication as public or private sector healthcare providers? And how does the collaborative practice agreement for PAs that are outlined in Bill 123 compare to the practice agreement adopted locally for nurse practitioners?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, I'd have to look it up, because, and I think that's an important question, to be able to see the differences between the collaborative practice of a nurse practitioner and a physician assistant. Because currently, the collaborative practice actually has to go through allied health, and with nurse practitioners, it's with the nursing board. So, I'd have to, I don't really know. I have to look at both of them and see the differences between the two.
Thank you, Dr. Yusebio. You wanna respond?
The, I'm speaking on behalf of FHP Clinic, and we have several nurse practitioners who are working there.
Sure.
And, you know, we're colleagues. I'm also very familiar with Kevin Hytosis, who is a nurse practitioner, who kind of authored their law and helped to get their law into place. Kevin and I have been friends a long time, and we discuss this sort of thing a lot. Currently, nurse practitioners can prescribe any Category II through V drug. The biggest difference is, in my opinion, their charts are not required to be cosigned by physicians. None of their prescriptions are required to be cosigned by physicians. If there's any regulatory of, as far as what specifically they can prescribe, it is within a collaborative practice agreement, which, as Dr. Yusebio said, their collaborative practice agreement is under the nursing board and the Board of Pharmacy. My collaborative practice agreement is under the Allied Health Board, and also the Board of Pharmacy, and I believe it's run by the Medical Board as well, the collaborative practice agreement for initial approval.
Yeah, that's true, 'cause the collaborative, for the PA.
Yes, sir.
I don't know about the nurse practitioners, but I don't know any nurse practitioner that's have their own private practice. So, that tells you a lot. They're still dependent. I get a call from nurse practitioners, "Hey, Dr. Shea, you know, this patient is bleeding. What should I do?" You know, almost every day, I get some messages or calls to help him out. So, they can't, to me, you know, there's a distinct difference between the level of education, even between a nurse practitioner and a physician.
Right. The collaborative practice agreements are specialty-specific, so that the agreement between the PA and the physician is dependent upon whatever clinical specialty they're in. So that a PA who is, let's say, working under the auspices of an oncologist is not going to be working with a surgeon. I mean, their practices are totally different.
All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, that's called the advanced practitioners, right, nurse practitioner, even midwives, for example. I don't see, they can go out and do their own thing, but I don't see any midwife practicing on their own, and they really need the OB-GYNs as a backup. So, ultimately, the physician is always on the top tier, and we're always supervising almost everybody below us.
All right, thank you so much for the input today. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
Thank you, Senator Guma Tata. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have questions for the panel, but I do like to thank them for coming down and testifying on this bill. Perhaps in markup, they can reach out again to the physicians and see how we can strengthen this bill to move it forward, or perhaps maybe do another version of this legislation, and see how is it that we can come to, I guess, a happy medium between the physicians and the physician's assistants, and moving forward with putting a piece of legislation forward. But thank you, Madam Chair, for that. Thank you, doctors, and thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you, Senator Ada and Vice Chair of the Committee on Health. I know you guys have been talking about this collaborative practice agreement, but, you know, as the committee chair on health, I guess we can agree to practice collaboration. And perhaps, Dr. Shea is the president of the Guam Medical Association. I'm not sure if your organization has a policy or a subcommittee, and if so, if there are recommendations to update and improve some of the laws that govern medicine and healthcare on Guam, please feel free to make those recommendations to the committee.
Yeah, we do. One of them, the most talked about one is CSR, which we can all agree on that. The two ones is the appointments and the nominations to the Guam Board. And if you really want a non-bias board that really protects the public, you gotta take away that political influence. And this is how, the challenge I am wired to discover, taking the medical director job, because it's a challenge, because it's already always politically influenced. All right?
Thank you, Dr. Shea. Senator Chulaiyin Maklos?
Thank you. Yes, so, composition of the board, I agree that if we could remove political influence, that would be the way to go. So, I welcome your recommendations. I did look at the composition of the board, based on oversight of the Board of Medical Examiners, and when they had a large backlog before. They've really cleared that up a lot recently. However, when I looked at boards across the nation, there are a lot more boards with a lot more public members or non-physician members on their boards. And Guam has one public member, the rest were all physicians. And so, just, I'm thinking, while, you know, I can see the concern of other people, other than physicians, on your board, I think that's been done in other places, and that to have a physician assistant on the board, as opposed to just another public member, is actually more in line with, you know, they should be able to help, not, and I can see the doctors are concerned that physician assistants are going to be governing or judging them, and so...
Well, let me ask you this question. The board, let's say, for example, has nine board members, right? And right now, five MDs, five physicians. Can the governor ultimately appoint five, six PAs on the board?
No, not by this law. It says six physician.
Only one.
Pardon?
Only one.
Only one.
Only one, right?
Yeah, only one.
Right. But wouldn't it be better that other nominations come from other arenas, from the legislature, for one, the people of Guam, or a self-application to the board? That's something, that's what I'm addressing.
No, I agree. I told you, I agree with that. That's just, yeah, that's something we can consider. I told you, we considered changing it to increase the public members because of the outcry that was had in the past. But we've kind of moved away from that, and...
Right, right. But you gotta, like, what Dr. Yusebio's saying is that, the primary mission for the Guam Board is not to say, "Wow, you know, I like this doctor, the personality is good, he's very compassionate." But the focus should be competency of each individual applicant, because we're dealing with patient lives.
Absolutely.
And if a patient is concerned about healthcare, you gotta make sure that the people who's on the board are well-trained, that not a layperson is going in there just because the physician's likable and they're providing the license, but to really go into details of the training, the competency, the history, and whether or not they can provide the care to the standard that the people expect.
Safety.
Yes, I agree, safety. I think that is the Allied Health Board's primary concern, why they want physician assistants who they feel they do not have that competency to review, be reviewed by the medical board. And it's really, I think, an attempt to strengthen oversight of physician assistants' practices and make them consistent, you know, with the strenuous, strict oversight that is being had in medical practices, or supposed to be, according to the rules, right? So, that's, I think, the goal, is supposed to be, that's the strictest standard. We want physician assistants to be under the strictest standards.
Yeah, and I think...
By people who are competent to review that.
And I think it's good, it's good to hear the legislature want to do that, but you also need to hold the physician to the strictest standards. If you want the PAs to be certified, you gotta make sure the supervisory doctor is more certified, too.
Oh, yes. I will review that if that's not required, but I can't imagine that that's not a requirement. I'm sure it is.
No, I don't, I think that's a...
No, it's not.
I think that's a mistake.
What?
The issue with board certification has to do with privileging in the hospital, and that belongs in the hospital purview. The Guam Board of Medical Examiners gives a license for physicians to practice medicine. They don't give a license to practice their specialty. They give a license to practice their medicine, per se, period.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm glad you clarified that. That's what I thought. So, that certification for PAs is from their physician assistant certification board. There's a, they take an exam, they get certified.
That's right.
We're requiring them to have that.
Right, but they can just pass it initially and not have to be currently certified, right?
Well, they do everything that gives them a certificate that's current. They take that to the current licensing board on Guam to be licensed on Guam, just like physicians must, no matter what their certifications might be, they must be licensed on Guam.
No, to be current, to be current, you have to go through a process.
Yes.
And the thing is, every 10 years, you're gonna have to take an exam, too.
Yes, but...
Actually, if I can clarify that a little bit. First off, the term "board certification" is not really used in physician assistants, because as Dr. Yusebio points out, you know, we're not board-certified in a specialty, we're licensed to practice in a more of a generality. There is specialty training going on, there are residency training programs for PAs now, and there are additional certificate qualifications that you can achieve and maintain. But currently, the NCCPA exam that we take on graduation from school is the only exam that allows you to use the designation PA-C. The dash C is certification. There are... There are a few states where you can practice without the C, North Carolina is one, I believe, where you don't have to have passed the NCCPA, they have other requirements for licensure in that state. But for the most part, most of the states agree and accept that the NCCPA exam is what you have to do in order to practice. You pass it initially on graduation, and then you have to recertify it, it used to be every six years, it has just moved, as Dr. Shea points out, to every 10 years. I'm currently going through it right now, they have a new version of it, where instead of sitting down for a six-hour exam, as I've done in the past, now they have a long-range assessment where I perform testing every quarter for 25 questions, I do it online, and then it's sent back in. It's a two-year program where I will, you know, finish it like next year, December. But still, that is the NCCPA exam that will allow me to keep the dash C on my signature block.
All right, thank you, can you look on page six of the bill, so, page six says you must pass the exam from the NCCPA.
Right.
And then number three says, hold a current certificate issued by the NCCPA, is that necessary then? Is that, is there a certificate that they issue after you pass the exam? Okay.
That is.
And it might be current for six to 10 years, so we'll keep that in, right?
But to keep it current, you have to do your educational trainings and stuff. I, to keep that current and to keep my license on Guam and my national certification, I have to pass the NCCPA at whatever intervals are required, and this is my first time doing it on the 10-year interval, but I've done it on the six-year up till then, and yes, I would have to provide that certificate to the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, and I also had to provide them the 50 hours or 100 hours of continuing medical education, category one and category two, essentially the same categories as physicians are required. Incidentally, they also, they ask for that the coursework that I take to renew my license has to be AMA certified or AAPA certified in order to be accepted.
You're talking about a CME?
Yes, sir. You know, I'm attending a CME course next week in Florida that's given for emergency medicine physicians.
Thank you, thank you, so...
That, you know, board certification is hospital-based, in Hawaii, for example, you can't practice a kapilani without being board-certified. Guam is probably one of the rare ones that you can practice here without being board-certified in the hospital. Across the country, if you want to talk about across the country, you have to be board-certified within a six-year period from the time you graduate from residency, if not, they will not allow you to practice.
I'm sure the chair is open if there are any recommendations from the medical association for requiring that. But, yeah, all right, I appreciate that, just, not, we're not changing that by this bill at all, that's not our intention, so, this bill, just to make sure that PAs get what they're supposed to do, pass that exam and get the certificate that they passed the exam.
Our focus is, on Guam, to try and get as many physicians as we can.
Yes.
Some of the physicians are not board-certified, but there are physicians who are not board-certified that are excellent. Board certification per se does not mean that the physician is the best, it's one of the things that says that you're good, but it's not the only thing that says that you're good. Some of the problems is that some physicians did not do all of their training in the United States, which limits your ability to take the board certification, and so that's part of the problem. I mean, there are others who can't, who couldn't pass the exam or whatever, but some, the issue is basically that for us, as people in Guam who deserve good healthcare, we need competent physicians, and when I say that, I mean, not necessarily physicians who are trained in the United States, I'm saying that we need to have physicians that can take care of patients, so that, my feeling is that we need to get, we need to look at the physicians and not necessarily say, just because you didn't do your training in the United States, you're not good. I think we need to look at physicians and see and let them demonstrate, are they safe or not safe? And that's what we need to create laws so that we are able to determine who's a safe physician or not. And I think that now is the time.
I appreciate that, I hope you will help us, Dr. Eusebio.
So to add to that, to add to that, you know, I guess we're having a roundtable now, but to add to that, if we're going to allow and look at foreign graduates, and I'm for that, because I want to recruit OB-GYNs, okay, and I refer patients to the Philippines, to St. Luke's, and they're trained and they're good, we send patients to take care of them, so I'm okay to sponsor somebody over if the law on Guam allows them to practice without being trained in the United States. Now, he may go back on his word on that.
The limiting factor, quite honestly, I'm not sure if you're aware, but the limiting factor is Medicare and federal rules and regulations. Medicare will not reimburse the hospital if the physician that's working there, taking care and utilizing that Medicare, is not, is not trained, did not do their residency in the United States. That's the problem, however, does not limit us for, to get physicians who do not use Medicare, like OB, pediatrics, so that frees us from that limitation.
Yes, thank you very much. So I like to work with the legislature in increasing OB-GYNs to Guam, where we can mentor them, because I'm sunsetting here on Guam, you know, I'm going on my 30th year, Dr. Eusebio knows me, so if we can create a law that allows legislation to provide the specialists that we need, that may be good for the people of Guam, some people may be against it, it's okay, but I'm for it, that's what I'm saying.
I want to thank you all for all the additional ideas that you've presented today, there, I just want to be clear, we're not making those changes in this bill, but we will consider that, I'm sure the health chair is taking notes here, but, so for this bill, it's really just to see what we thought would be a strengthening the oversight over PAs, making sure that they're being governed by people who are competent to regulate that, when we're talking about prescribing drugs, like only doctors can do, we want to make sure that, you know, they are, like what the supervising agreement says, that they are being strictly supervised, that that is being adhered to, that, that, that we are in agreement as a state, as you said, different states do different things, that we are in agreement as a state as to what authority they should be given, or maybe if it changes in the future, this is the board that should decide that or recommend that, because this is, this is, it's that scope of practice, it's that practicing of medicine that really, again, I think it's more fitting under your board than the allied health board, although, I mean, I know you described collaboration, I just think that's really impractical at this time, they are completely strapped for, they've got 11 or 13, if I remember correctly jurisdictions, and, but this one, I feel they felt was very critical because of the medical nature of what they are doing and the patients, so it's this risk to the patients that we want to be governed by the medical board, and so I will continue to discuss this bill with all of you, but I thank you again for your testimony, very helpful, siso samasi.
And again, thank you to the panel for being here, Mrs. Kanata, Mr. Stanley, Dr. Shea, and Dr. Eusebio, and I look forward to collaborating as well with you as we try to improve healthcare on Guam, thank you so much. The time now is 4:39 in the afternoon, the public hearing on Bill 123 and Bill 100 is now concluded, thank you so much.